Under God, indivisible. Thank you all for coming. Mr. Leon, Mr. Sfoboda, Ms. Scanlon, Ms. McDonald, Ms. Wilczynski, all excused this evening. First item on the agenda, a moment of silence, please join me. And a moment of silence for Christopher Elia, retired employee of the district, Joan Coffin, a retired employee, Lawrence Monan, a former employee, and James Mangan, a graduate of the district. Thank you. Item two, initial budget presentation. Mr. Keegan.
Yes, I'm gonna go move over there.
Good evening. So as the title of this slide indicates, we're gonna take a closer look at the initial budget that was presented last week to the board and the community. We're gonna look at again, just as a, maybe a little redundant, but just go through our initial revenues, tax cap, initial expenses. Then we're gonna talk a little bit about some program initiatives related to Vision 2020 and close with our usual vote and election information and budget process timeline. So believe it or not, these revenues are very close to what I presented a week ago. We had a slight change in our pilot revenues. And that's now down from $220,000 to $219,000. And so we pushed those changes through. We're still, there's been no major breakthrough here, so we're still looking at using $2.7 million of fund balance. And we did have a slight revision to the tax cap, which was required to be filed with the New York State Comptroller's Office by March 1st. Vince Love and I got that done. And the change in the tax cap, again, is that pilot revenue. So we're still at a tax levy increase of 2.94%. That, again, is an increase of about $72 on a $100,000 home before star. On the expenditure side, no changes from our initial budget. We're gonna talk more tonight about the initiatives that kind of are the backing for what you're seeing here in expenditures. And we are still looking at a $1.1 million deficit that we're hopeful will be somewhat closed by increases in state aid when the legislators and governor complete the budget process, the state budget process.
So some of us are gonna help Mr. Keegan this evening with some of these slides. This presentation, kind of a joint effort, is we really focused on initiatives related to Vision 2020. And so tonight we'll be talking more about a focus on increasing experiences and opportunities for students aligned with our mission statement and specifically related to expanded course options for students at the high school, increasing the minimum credit requirement for students at the high school in terms of the credits that seniors will need to take, and increasing staffing levels to ensure that all students have the opportunity to take art, health, and family consumer science at the junior high school. In addition, we are looking at a potential increase in staffing for the junior high science in relation to class size. And we will continue to monitor and address staffing needs associated with the special education programs. We also are looking at increasing the number of sections and some core subject areas to continue to maintain or lower class size in places that we thought that was necessary. And of course, definitely a high priority, adding additional resources to focus on safety, security, and the social, emotional well-being of students and staff. And the last thing that we'll include this evening is potential reinstatement of co-curricular and athletic activities that were cut in previous years.
Well, this next slide refers to CNS. And Mr. Leclair was here a week or so ago and was talking about the expanded courses. So there are some courses on the far right that they're looking to delete, and that was based on survey. And it was, there were courses that were not in high demand. And then they are looking to add some additional courses in the business, English, facts, math, science, and social studies. And again, through input, through students and faculty, looking at courses that the students would enjoy taking and would help meet their goals towards college and career readiness. We talked about the increase of the minimum credit requirement. It used to be five and a half credits. They're looking to expand that to a total of six credits as a minimum requirement. Because one of the things that was identified last year was that there are many students that are leaving early or coming in late. And many of the responses that students were giving is there were not electives or courses by that time that they either needed or wanted. So it's a twofold process. We upped the minimum requirement, but are providing coursework that they would enjoy taking and meet their needs as they move on. Next slide is for the junior high school. And taking a look at our staffing, there are students that we wanna make sure have opportunities to take all of the courses such as art, health, and family consumer science. And what we're finding is those courses were not being offered each block. So there are times where we have students that have what they call singletons. They may be taking orchestra or certain courses that came in conflict. So this will provide these courses to run throughout the day so everyone would have the opportunity to take part in these courses. The next slide is regarding living environment and class size. We are finding that more and more students are taking living environment. And thus, in a science class with laboratory needs and experiments, you do not want class sizes of 28, 29, or 30. So for safety issues also, and that students can get more individualized attention, we want those classes to be a little bit lower. So therefore, we needed to increase the staffing there. This last slide that I have is regard to special ed. And we've gone to a different model, as you well know. And we are working continuously to take a look and refine our, what we're doing and trying to meet the needs of students and staff. And by doing this, we're taking a look at, from elementary, middle school, and high school increases, or what's happening at annual reviews in order to meet the enrollment needs of all students in special education. So we're looking at some fine tuning there with our staffing. This next slide is for middle school. And what we're finding is that there is an increase in enrollment at our middle school right now to the tune of about 30 to 32 students, which creates a new section for math, English, science, social studies across the board. So we need to make sure we're meeting those needs at the middle school level. And this last slide is talking about some of the other needs with safety and security and social, emotional well-being. As you know, things that we're taking a close look at in the community and in the news. We wanna make sure that safety is a priority. And we're considering an additional SRO. And that would give us one SRO at each secondary school. Also looking at additional social worker. Again, when we're talking about social, emotional well-being, that will help meet the needs of students. And also looking at potential interns that we could put in different locations, again, to assist us in some of the needs that we're trying to do with our initiatives.
I'm sure that most of you remember back as far as 2009, 2010, when we made drastic cuts to co-curricular and athletic activities. Last couple of years, we've been slowly prioritizing and put some of those opportunities back in for students. And so we did have a meeting of the board budget. Kind of our thoughts on the next pieces of the budget allows for that we would try to reinstate. Any of these that are listed here coaches in order to show back in line between...
As you know, we have a peer assistance and review panel that oversees a team of consultant teachers that support our probationary teachers. It's a very effective program that we've been doing for several years now. I'm very pleased to say that we have expanded the program and it needs to expand again. We are looking at increasing our staffing in this area by two additional consultant teachers because we have crossed the 100 threshold of probationary teachers. We have that many new, young, starting teachers. And this program is designed to support them. And additionally, the need has increased also because, as you may be aware, the probationary period has been extended for teachers from three to four years. So as we're projecting, we'll definitely need to do an increase. But when that bubble of teachers that went from the three to four-year probationary, when that bubble moves through, we're projecting that we will be, need to reduce the number of consultant teachers. And those staffing levels are all specified by the teacher contract to make sure that we stay true to the work and that we're able to get a consultant teacher regularly into the classroom with all the teachers.
So in summary, as we spoke last week, we, while the governor's budget did increase our general aid, we're still very frustrated by the fact that we're still over $10 million lower than we should be in our foundation aid. And can you just imagine what this district would be like with another $10 million of revenue? The campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit resulted in a foundation formula that was codified into law. And we are not receiving the amount of money that we're supposed to in accordance with that. And we're hopeful that that will be the biggest contributor to our increased aid revenue when the budget is finalized. The preliminary tax levy, as I mentioned already, is 2.94. It's at the tax cap. It'll require a simple majority, one more yes vote than no vote. And taxpayers under this plan would receive their rebate checks. The initial budget includes our revenues of $163.6 million in revenues. That's about a 3% increase. And I just wanna remind everybody that, you know, our contract increases with all of our employees, we are a people-based business, is 3%. So that number kind of rings true when the majority of our costs are people-based. Initial budget includes revenues of $162.4. Only 2.37% in increase in revenues. We need to close that gap because we have a $1.1 million gap that we need to close between now and the time that the board adopts the budget. While we shared with you a closer look at the initial budget, we're still working on key items. Meeting with our directors over the next few weeks to discuss their specific budget proposals. In every one of those discussions, we identify opportunities for both efficiencies and needs to spend additional money. So it's a constant tweaking and trade-off process that'll go on for the next several weeks. And we look forward to keeping the board and community updated on that process. So today, March 5th, was our detailed look at the initial budget. We're gonna ask you to approve our bus bond proposition and the notice of budget hearing and election. And we'll have our update on March 26th, where we'll hopefully have a much more fine-tuned budget. And hopefully, we'll have some feedback from the legislature and the governor in terms of where they're going with state aid. Racing toward our board adoption of the budget on the 2nd of April and our budget vote with the community on the 15th. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. Thank you. This has got quite a bit more passion in it than the last one. Phrase, "business as usual budget" last time. So we're $1.1 million and change short of a business. So...
Well, I wanted to clarify though, it's business as usual plus the things we knew were critical to add. And what we're trying to share with you tonight are the items that we believe are critical to be added.
Okay, well, that's where I was going. So everything we just saw that was critical to add is included in that business as usual.
Is included in the budget.
Awesome. Okay, because I was hoping we were... So, that 1.1 is that that's with the, being at the tax cap limit? Unbalanced, the same level that we did last year? Obviously, you have an itemized cost of each of those pages.
Yes, we do, yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see that. I know we don't meet until the end of them. Very short. Those are a lot of important things, and it's hard to... So then I assume the budget subcommittee will come with a recommendation?
Yes, if I could jump in here, I was going to say this under my comments, but it makes more sense to address this now. So, yes, there's a lot of work to be done between now and the time we meet again. And we won't be meeting again until March 26th because the March 19th meeting... So within that time, we need to have probably a couple of meetings of the board budget subcommittee. Because what we need to do now is figure out, out of those items that you saw tonight that line up with Vision 2020 and the opportunities we want for students, as well as the deficit, how we're going to prioritize and make decisions. That's the meat of the work that needs to be done.
And I, this is a dumb statement. I assume we don't expect about $1 million more in the budget that settles?
No, but we did, no, I don't necess, that would be wishful thinking. But I think last year, our increase in foundation aid was about 1.4 million. And this year, it's just under $800,000. So, I don't know, maybe...
But we're 1.1 short, yeah.
Maybe we'll get half of that?
And also, over the next couple of weeks, we need to take a closer look in terms of, are there lines in the budget that can, some of which can be reallocated as well? So, a lot of, you know, a lot of give and take, a lot of decisions to be made. And I also wanna thank all of you, and actually, community members too, that might have been poking around last night or this morning. Thank everybody for their patience in terms of this presentation being posted tonight. With the weather on Friday and some uncertainty in terms of pulling this together, we're not able to get it posted until...
So, I ponder this, when I do my math, 1% in the levy, I'm gonna assume is about 800... We have, like, so many places to get more. All right.
Any other questions?
I just have a question. I'm thrilled we're adding these electives back in. You know, back before we started cutting everything, I think the electives is what made CNS such a high-profile school in the area. Who, the classes that we are bringing back, are they classes that we've had before? Are they new? Are they a mixture?
Dan, can you go back to that chart for a second? So, if you take a look at this, there's some classes that we are eliminating and other classes that we're adding. There's more being added than being taken away. But the classes that are being added are being added based on things that we believe students would be more interested in. And even more importantly, things that we think would help them to get experience and kind of try out some things that make them more college and career-ready in today's day and age.
I think that's great, but like meteorology, I think that's an awesome class to have for anybody looking into going into that for college. Is that something that we offered before and cut, or is this something completely new?
I believe these are new.
We had a, like, a summary course called Topics in Astronomy and Meteorology, but we just couldn't, they couldn't get deep enough in either topic to make it work.
I'd love to see more classes like this.
I do wanna caution people. Please don't leave tonight and go out and tell, you know, your friends that these things are definitely happening. They are things that we think are important and to give, to give big consideration to, to increase opportunities and experiences for our students. But, you know, given the fact that we still have this deficit and we don't know if we're gonna get more state aid and everything else that we've kind of described tonight, this is what we're trying to work towards, but no decisions have been made at this point.
Oh, sure. I just, these type of classes...
You know, I wanna say that so that the students understood it too. Because I'm seeing some of them nod, you know, kind of indicating that the stuff looks kind of like a good idea to them, and that's what we're hoping for.
I mean, with your vision, with our Vision 2020 and with, you know, filling in the gaps for electives, I'd love to see more classes like this that have more real-world connection for college and career readiness. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go back to what Paul said. He said, "There's only so many places to get money." And I'll go back to when I was still working and Joe Camorino from Liverpool, at the time, rest his soul, said, "They've capped our aid, and the day's gonna come when they cap our taxes. And when they do, we're gonna be done." And he was sort of prophetic, and I think he was definitely right. Comments from the audience? We do have one. Rolando Lopez, where's Rolando? Come on up, sit right down at that chair, talk into that microphone, so we can pick you up. Now, Ms. Gibson is gonna time you at three minutes. So you want to address Black History Month. Go ahead, Rolando. Thank you.
Because I was raised a follower of Jesus Christ, I didn't naturally see color until it was pointed out. It was only until I got ordered and started developing my entertainment craft more that I started realizing how people really saw me and how I was different. Well, because of my upbringing, I came to North Syracuse School District in the 7th grade. Oddly enough, that's when I realized I was first black. Fast forward to my junior year, and I transferred to Liverpool High School. And I became more proud to be black when I saw a community of people who looked just like me in the same rhythm and flow that I was on. It became more apparent when I was in their Amosia Black History Month showcase and saw my culture united under one. When I knew that I was going to be returning to CNS for my senior year, this was an experience I wanted to share with the people there. I was excited and pumped to bring this prideful showcase to CNS because I absolutely thought they would be on board with the progressive nature, and progressive nature of embracing not only my culture, but our differences as human beings. But I was sadly mistaken and defeated. Not one mention of a Black History Month Day or the acknowledgement of February as Black History Month. Sure, there was Amosia, but there wasn't enough to acknowledge that Black History Month even existed. As you may know, some of our top sportsmen in the school right now are of African-American or of African-American descent. And yet, it took a movie about an African king in a fictional land to show me how important and special my culture was. I felt, as a culture, I was not represented properly in this district. And so I asked, is there a way that we could help this for future generations who are also struggling with their identity as young black males or black females? Thank you.
Rolando, thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Can I ask you to please forward what you have shared tonight to Mrs. Gibson at some point? She'll connect with you and tell you how to get that message.
Of course.
You're a very good speaker. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rolando. 4A, board committee reports or comments, anything from the five of us?
I amend my report from the last meeting.
You certainly may, sir.
I was looking at the timing of the, this is for the legislative committee, for the timing of the board meetings, and I neglected, I had reported we were going to meet with legislators, representatives from the legislative committee. I met with superintendent's speech, assistant superintendent's and our student rep, Giorgio Rouda. And I did report that we had those meetings scheduled. We did hold those meetings. And I just wanted to send accolades to Giorgio, who represented us well. He's a very articulate, young man, and spoke on our behalf, I think, better than any of us could. Having it come from a student was pretty powerful with our... That with Al Sterpi and with both Senators Valeski and... I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that that occurred.
Appreciate it, Paul.
And the committee does meet again March 21st.
George, anything? Okay. Superintendent's comments?
Oh, I have a few comments. Many of you know DJ Vilnav is the blanket kid. Member of my superintendent's student advisory council. And he sent me a very nice thank you note today that I wanted to share. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do DJ's gift of warmth. With the district's help, we were able to collect over 500 blankets. We are so grateful for all the support that you have shown. And this is the first year that we had every single school participate. Congratulations to all those who helped, and certainly to DJ for his leadership with us. He's been, he's a freshman right now, and he's been doing this since he was in second grade. So we had some athletes go to Section and State meetings. And I would like to congratulate Jeremiah Willis, who set a new Section 3 record in the triple jump. Forty-nine, forty-nine feet, 49.5.57 feet, winning the state meet. He also took first in the long jump and placed second in the 55-meter dash. And also, congratulations to Nathan Poyer and David Ware, placing sixth in the boys' distance medley intersectional relay. Congratulations to Mia Pestle, second place in the girls' 1,500-meter run. And Joe Williams placed second in the boys' 55-meter hurdles. So we're really proud of them. And I also wanna add that they did this in spite of the weather. And I wanna thank all the people that pulled together to get them out of Syracuse into Stanton Island so that they could compete. They left the night before the storm started so that they could have that opportunity. So that's great for them. And in addition, in terms of working around the storm, I received a thank you note today from Larry Schmidt, who is the advisor for Winter Guard. "Thanking us for allowing the Winter Guard to travel this past weekend. We had a highly successful weekend, and the kids, staff, and parents all felt it was a big success too." And they actually left after the storm and headed in the opposite direction. So they were allowed to go and take part in this. Competing in this show gives us a national ranking and seeds us into the national championship in Dayton, Ohio, where 371 teams will be competing. We compete in the highest and most challenging class after being promoted following last year's success. We are currently ranked 15th in the country. To give an idea of the meaning of this, in all classes combined, there are over 2,000 high school teams. They were appreciative for the support and trust that we had in them. And one last thing, speaking of the weather, last Thursday, I was asked, "What's the status of our snow days?" And I kind of just chuckled and thought, "I'm not gonna answer that question until Friday's over" because we anticipated, although I don't think any of us thought it was gonna be as bad as it was, we anticipated that Friday was going to potentially be a snow day. We were fortunate enough to have six snow days in our calendar this year, which is more than usual. We've used four at this point. So the big question is, what happens Memorial Day weekend? If we still have the two remaining days by April 5th, then the Friday before Memorial Day will be off for students and staff. So we all have to keep our fingers crossed and hope that the snowstorms are done and we don't use any more snow days so we can get that...
Do all you young folks out there understand from last Friday, when I was your age, I walked to school every day, two miles through two feet of snow uphill both ways, okay? Just remember that, how lucky you got it. At least, that's what my father used to tell me. Yeah, barefoot. Routine action items, 5A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Ed for February 26, 2018. B, consideration of the classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. And C, consideration and classification and placement of students in home instruction programs as recommended by the Home Instruction Review Committee. I will entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, and C as a group. Mr. Harrington, I'll go over this way. Mr. Fefalia? Mr. Frifalia? All five of us in favor? Okay, I hope so. We're going to take all these separately in number six. First, a resolution to approve the ballot propositions for May 15th. And you can see from this, we've got the proposition for the purchase of buses and the proposition for the Salina Free Library as well. Recommended board action is to approve the resolutions. A motion to approve? Jackie and Mike? Connie, is this a well-call? Because I'm not seeing any. No, it's not.
Only for the bodies.
Okay, all in favor? It'll be carried. Budget hearing and election. This is lengthy statement, you know, when's the hearing going to be? When's the vote going to be? There's the two propositions. Election districts lengthy. This will appear in the newspaper four times, at least 45 days before the vote, first one. And this is where you do need a well-call vote. No. Ah, that's when you need it. Okay, so this one, again, Mr. Maurizio, Ms. Owens, all in favor? C, non-resident health and welfare rate, which you can see calculated, what we charge other districts for that. Non-resident tuition, which is actually calculated by the state of New York. Acknowledgement of gift. New York Life has donated $500 to the district for use of the boys' baseball team. Those will go into special aid fund. So the resolution to accept with gratitude. So I'll take a motion to approve 6, C, D, and E as a group. Mr. Harrington, Mr. Frifalia, all in favor? Retirements. Virginia, uh-oh, help me, Luno? Luno? Okay, Virginia Luno, bus attendant, will retire with 10 years of service. And Reggie White, associate principal at the junior high, will retire with 33 years of service. So we wish both of them a long, happy, and healthy retirement. 7A, instructional personnel. 7B, support staff personnel. 7C, administrative personnel. Any questions on any of these three? Any need for discussion? Motion to approve all three. Mike? Paul? The second? All in favor? Executive session. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association Bargaining Unit, to receive an update on four legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment record of three individuals with no action to follow. Motion? Mr. Harrington, Ms. Owens, all in favor? 733. Okay. Be nothing else. All you folks, I know you want to get home and get back to your homework, so come on up, we'll sign your forms.